Good late afternoon or early evening. Let me call to order the regular city council meeting for the city of St. Helena for Tuesday, August 28th. And Mr. Prestwich, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galbry.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Ellsworth.
Here.
Cloverstein.
Here.
Item four on our agenda is public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us with respect to matters of municipal concern, not on our agenda this evening. And public comment is listed, is limited to four minutes. Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Bryce Howard. I'm the general manager for Upper Valley Disposal Services. I want to come tonight and give you a brief report on a series of fires we have had up at Clover Flat landfill. I'll come back in October with a more robust PowerPoint and some other presentations. We've had a series of small fires and then we had one fairly major fire recently. Cal Fire responded, helped us out, did a lot of great things. Part of that process, we're working with Cal Fire and County Environmental Health to come up with a mitigation and prevention plan to fight the fire but also try and mitigate them from starting. We're in the process of going through that. We're working with Cal Fire on providing some additional water supply out there and some additional manpower. And I'll come back in October and give you a more robust PowerPoint sort of type presentation at that time.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Howard.
Could I just ask one question?
Sure.
Is there, is, is there anything that, that the city can do to assist or help and participate that would, or if you think of things as you go, and let us know so that if you see something where we could help?
Sure. I, I think that both Calistoga, St. Helena, and Yountville produce water. And sometimes water is something we need, so we'll look into that.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Abrams?
I'm here just to give a little bit of an update about the recycling market, and I will be back in October. Also, we'll have a dual PowerPoint program for you, and we'll take about 15 minutes to run through it. But the recycling market has changed a little bit. China has discontinued accepting quite a few materials. Some of our materials are going in other places at the moment, Thailand, Vietnam, Mexico. And so, the only change that we have made to our program at this time is we have discontinued receiving plastic bags. These are like Ziploc bags and grocery bags and bags you get in the produce section. I noticed that Safeway also has a heavy-duty plastic bag, that kind of bag. We don't have a market for. The only kind of plastic film we still can process is the high-density film from a winery that's very clean and it's not multicolored, and so we're able to move that product. So, we, we do have two staff, two students who recently graduated from college who've come back to their hometown, so you might see them about. They're putting labels on the blue bins that say, "Only put these items in the blue bin." We get about 20% contamination in our program right now, the whole Up Valley area, so we're receiving about 20% garbage in the recycling program. So, we're gonna be isolating this and working with the community on cleaning up the stream. So, what we say is, when in doubt, throw it out. Okay? In the brown.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, yes, Mr. Brown?
You called my name before I even got up here. Bye, bye, you guys. And in consideration that I'm up here quite often, I think it's important that you and the city staff know that, one of the things I value a lot about living in St. Helena is that I'm one person in about 6,000. And, you know, sometimes you can make a difference in a small town. And I came from Los Angeles and one person in 6 million, and it's pretty difficult to make a difference there. So, please don't ever think that I take for granted this privilege that I have this evening and every, every time I come up here to speak to you, because I do very much value it. I have a couple of things tonight I'd like to mention. The first thing is I'd like to remind everybody that coming this November, we're looking at another rate increase with our base and our volume use rates. Looks like our base rates are gonna be going up about 19%, and our volume rates can be going up about 12.8%. And this is the third, I believe, of six rate increases that we'll be seeing through November 21st of 2021. The second thing I'd like to bring up tonight is, it sort of relates to old business. And I know that the city council has already made the decision to conceal the, the amount of water and the water rates of the water agreement customers. And I thought, occurred to me the other day, that, you know, in the past couple of months, I've spoken to a couple of the city council members, and it appears to me, from what I've been told, that they don't understand what the water rates or the actual volumes or the, the, the amount of money that those water agreement customers are paying either, because, you know, I've asked them and they said they really don't know. And I, I can begin to understand why you can't provide us, disclose that information to the public, but I don't see any reason why you shouldn't be able to provide that information to the city council members. And so, tonight I would like to ask the city council to put on the agenda the consideration of releasing that information to all of the city council members so that they would know what those rates and what the volumes are, to make sure that they are conforming with the water agreements that each one of them have. Last city council meeting, Anthony McKelley asked for the disclosure of the Los Alcubas TOT and the water volumes that they were using. And it occurred to me that that was also, according to Mark Prestwich, that was not to be able to be revealed. And I've talked to Mark about this, and I'm just gonna bring it up here tonight, too. In 2012, when the city council approved that project, I was one of probably 25 people in the audience who asked the question, "How much water is that Los Alcubas hotel going to use?" And I was told that it was going to be a water-neutral project. So, three years later, or two years later, this hotel's been in operation, we asked the question as how much water they're using. And we're told that you can't give us that information. I think, I think that there's a potential for a problem there, because in the future, if there's another project that wants to be brought up or approved in this city and it's water-neutral, I, I think it goes to the, it goes to the credibility of the city to be able to be accountable for that comment, that it is water-neutral. So, just as a comment, I, I would think that in the future, if you say something's gonna be water-neutral, you should be able to stand up behind that a couple of years later and verify that to the, to the public. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a quick, couple of comments. Please sit down, Mr. Brown. In response, certainly it's my understanding that our larger customers pay our published rates. There's nothing secret about that. I think the city has confirmed that over and over again, that they pay our published rates. Isn't that right, Mr. Prestwich? Secondly, the council has taken the position, after considerable discussion, that we should follow state law, which says, hey, individual water usage is complimentary unless there's a clear public interest that overrides that. And we took a vote and didn't, and, and the vote was that there was no clear public interest to override the disclosure issue. Am I right about that, Mr. Brown?
That is my recollection of what the council's action was.
And then, with respect to Los Alcubas, again, we don't disclose, and you don't disclose to members of the council either, individual property TOT collection.
Generally, the law is, let me backtrack. The Public Records Act, as the council will recall, does allow for the council to make those, make that information available to the public under certain circumstances, and the council did have that discussion and made a decision on that. I believe that's, it's Section 625416, as I recall. And the rule under the Public Records Act is that unless a document is, or where a document is available and open to the public, it is only available to the full public. The council can't give itself preferential rights under the Public Records Act.
All right, good.
If I could just...
Is there any further public comment?
The city council would be able to know. They don't know what is...
I think that the city attorney just explained that under state law, the council and members of the council are not entitled to preferential views of these documents over the public.
Is there a timeframe for which something like this could be brought back to the agenda?
Well, somebody can seek to put it on the agenda, but we have dealt with it this year, and it's not in our work plan at this point in time, so I would hope that we wouldn't revisit it at least this year.
If I could just say, my recollection is we decided, we, we did have that vote, and it was correct, but that was, I thought, a general policy and still didn't prevent us in a specific instance from looking at that exception and deciding that it would apply. That's my recollection of what we did, but could be wrong.
No, you may speak at public comment if you wish. Yeah, please come up.
Good evening. I'm Anthony McKelley. I was here two weeks ago and brought this subject up. To clarify for the, Mr. Brown and Mr. Prestwich, I'm only asking for information that comes at this city council meeting, that projects are approved on that condition, that they're gonna be water-neutral, or that they're gonna raise so much revenue at the city. You bring it here in a public forum. That's the difference between, to me, any other public record. You've endorsed that, you've supported it, you voted for it. We, the public, should have a right to verify that you told us the truth then. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to respond to that, Mr. Brown, please?
I, I think it raises an interesting question, and that is that when, in the context of, an adjudicatory decision, that the council is imposing an obligation, a condition, on a project applicant, whether that would constitute, and the applicant accepts that, whether that would constitute essentially a waiver of the confidence of the, of the nondisclosure ability of that information? I really don't know the answer here. I'd need to research that, but it raises, as I said, a very real question.
All right. Would you look into it and report back, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. The next item is...
Well, I assume the members of the council are on board. I am on, on board with Tom looking into that. I think we have a new policy where we have to have more than one person in that direction, and I'm, I'm in favor of that myself. Okay, good.
I agree, and I'd appreciate if you refreshed my recollection of exactly what we did do about four months ago.
All right. Any further public comment? Then I'll close public comment, and we'll go to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. And I would like first to begin by asking Chief Imboden to come up to the podium. As has been reported, the chief is leaving us. He's been a superstar chief for us. He certainly commands the respect and affection of everybody in the community. We absolutely appreciate your service. We're gonna miss you deeply, and this evening I would like to present you with a plaque.
Thank you very much.
It says, "Presented to Chief of Police William Imboden, in appreciation of your dedication, leadership, and outstanding service to the city of St. Helena and St. Helena Police Department, 2007-2018."
Great visibility in your new office. I'm sure I'll have a spot for it. Thank you very much.
All right, let me start with Mr. Brown. We met in closed session, and to my understanding, there was no reportable action.
That's correct. The city council did meet in closed session to discuss those items on the agenda for today's afternoon's special meeting. No reportable actions were taken.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
Nothing from the city attorney.
All right, Mr. Prestwich?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of updates on some forthcoming special median, meetings, and one update on a project. On Thursday, this is August 30th, at 10:00 a.m. at the fire department, we are going to have a workshop on mobile home rent stabilization. This is an informational workshop. On September 11th, at the next council meeting, we will be presenting a downtown economic strategy. And then, on September 17th, we will be discussing next steps on the shape-related project.
All right. Ms. Smiths?
A quick report. As many of you know, following the October fires last year, our police chief and our fire chief and city staff, along with input from the public, put together an after-action item, or after-action report. And one of the items was to start to procure certain emergency supplies for the city. We are just about there with getting all of our emergency supplies, so we have ordered and received sat, more satellite phones. We've also ordered and received portable charging stations that can be plugged in, and when we don't have power, they're actually solar charged, so people, the members of the public can charge their cellphones and charge certain devices. In addition, we, they should be delivered tomorrow, and they're gonna be placed within various locations in the city, large emergency supply kits. So, I just wanted to keep everybody apprised of where we're at with that, and we have been making progress.
All right. Mr. Dufopoulos? Mr. House?
Just briefly, two items. One, last Thursday, the contractor for the Truly Flats Affordable Housing Project, 1105 Pope Street, set the final four units, so I'm sure the council and the community has seen those, those individual units being installed. I just want to thank you for your patience while Pope Street was closed. I know that was an inconvenience for a lot of folks. And we are, according to the applicant, expecting occupancy of that project by the end of the year, so that's very exciting, and we'll be talking about it a little bit later on the agenda. And then separately, the planning department is hosting two design guideline workshops at Carnegie tomorrow. I encourage members of the community, council, planning commission, and any other boards and commissions to come out and provide their input as individual citizens. These were not noticed as special meetings, but we would love to hear from everybody who can come. We're, there are two workshops, 10:00 a.m. to noon, and then 4:30 to 6:30. We're trying to capture folks who may not be able to make it during the work hours or who may have evening commitments. And they're, they're set up intentionally to allow people to come in and be able to spend as much or as little time as possible. So, if they don't have very much time, just 10 minutes or so, they should be able to still get in and provide some input. Or if folks are interested in kind of learning more about the process, they're also structured for those. So, there's gonna be individual workstations. We're gonna have a number of city staff there, and we're really looking to hear a lot of input from the community.
Okay, good. Terrific. Ms. Smithies?
Thank you. I want to report that the sidewalk project is wrapping up along Railroad, the curb ramp sidewalk project on Railroad and Library Lane in Grayson. We should be having a notice of completion coming up at either the end of September or the 1st of October. The Elbonita Kennedy Court La Quinta Way project started Monday, yesterday, so they started saw cutting the sidewalks that are being replaced and the curb ramps. It's very exciting that they're underway, and the project should be wrapped up by mid-September. They're thinking, "I'll move that fast," so it's been good to work with them. That's Argonaut Constructors that's on the job. In addition, the downtown restroom project should be hitting the streets tomorrow for advertisement, so we're hoping the end of September, we'll have open bids and be able to award that in October. And on September 15th, the stormwater cleanup day will be happening at Jacob Myler Park. If you're interested in signing up and being a volunteer and haven't yet, please contact Michael Fontana with Public Works. Or you can reach on the Napa RCD website, and they list various sites throughout the county. It's the, the whole area, regional area that's doing the cleanup day, coastal cleanup.
What day again was that?
September 15th.
September 15th, yeah.
I believe it's 9:00 a.m. And that is all. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Ms. Cloverstein? Mr. Ellsworth?
I have a few items. I'm still working on my comparison of our watershed and water source areas with other Bay Area counties. Hopefully, I'll have something to share soon. Very excited to hear about the downtown economic strategy coming forward on, is it September 11th? Great. So, that's, that was wonderful news. And then, on Saturday, this last Saturday, I was out at Stonebridge Apartments with a few other members of the council, working on a playground build. I showed up there at 9:00 o'clock, and there were about 150 volunteers from all over Northern California, as far down as Fresno and Madera, many coming from Kaiser, to build this playground, sort of community effort in one day, with the Stonebridge folks. And it was very inspiring and very moving, and it was about five hours of substantial work. So, but the, the other really great thing that happened was that the folks from EAH Housing who managed that project and put it together were there, and they were helping, too, the CEO and others. And we got into some discussions about housing and some, some multi-site projects they're doing in other towns. And so, when we move forward on our housing strategy later this fall, I think there were some things that we, I gained from that yesterday, or, I mean, on Saturday, that could be put in that, in that bucket. So, anyway, that was a great day, and that's it.
All right. Mr. Doring? Mr. White? I've got just a few things. First of all, I know Mr. Belt was there, but I thought the high school put on a fabulous performance of 12 angry jurors. And it's really a great pleasure to attend that performing arts center, and I would encourage all residents to view the calendar and make it a point to go from time to time. It's not expensive, but at least that performance was absolutely splendid, and I think probably sets the standard for future performance as well. I certainly attended, as did other council members, the 140th anniversary of Steve's Hardware. That was really very well done. It was in the back. Food was good. I agree with Mr. Ellsworth in terms of his description of the Stonebridge project. I spent five hours with a shovel, and I'm feeling it even right now. But what was, among other most interesting aspects of that was that it was made possible by a grant by a not-for-profit based in Washington, DC called Kaboom. Interesting name. And its mission is to provide grant funding for playgrounds in affordable housing projects around the country. And here, it teamed up with Kaiser Permanente, which supplied a large part of the manpower, and then also Stonebridge. And Stonebridge residents were there in great force, and as were some city residents, and EAH, as Mr. Ellsworth mentioned as well. And it was really a very moving project, as he said. And then, I also think the community most enjoyed the Chamber of Music concerts on Thursday night that wrapped up on August. I'm losing track of my dates here, but last Thursday, and it was well-attended. Lyman Park in August this year was absolutely splendid. It was cool, and the music could be most enjoyed. Food was good, too. And then finally, just one last question of staff. There's been quite a bit of email traffic on Nextdoor dealing with Madrona Avenue and the potential for a stop sign at Allen and Madrona. Not coming from me, I live on Allen Avenue, but can you just respond a little bit to that?
There's been a couple of intersections on Madrona people have been concerned about, so we're looking into getting quotes from consultants to provide warrant studies and whether it's warranted to put a stop sign in either one of those direct, intersections to be defensible if enforcement action is against those drivers that aren't following the right-of-way.
All right. But, well, okay. I can understand that, but even if it's not defensible, it still might be a good idea to put them there as a deterrent? Or is that, does that violate state law?
I would disagree if it goes against recommended guidelines from them.
Okay, fair enough. All right. That, that gets us through item five. Item six is postponed till September 11th because the firefighters are away and on duty. Next item is staff briefing Upper York Creek Dam. That I characterize as the damn dam.
Yes. So, I think we brought this back to council for an update in the end of May, early June. That's where we notified you that we were splitting the project into phases. Unfortunately, we didn't get to the point where we're in construction this fall, but the positive news is we have progressed. We've received at least one of the four permits we need for the downstream sediment trap for Phase 1. That's from one of the big hitters, which is the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Army Corps and the California Fish and Wildlife are very close to providing their permits as well. We actually have one waiting on another permit, so we have to run concurrently, because it's part of both Phase 1 and Phase 2, and that's the yellow foothill-legged frog that's a new endangered species. And so, it requires, either we do extensive studies, which could take two years, or we apply for incidental take-repermit. Just acknowledging that we may have to take if we're going in there, but the good news is that the after-project will mitigate and should enhance any habitat that may be along the York Creek. In addition to that, we received plans, specs, and estimates for the Phase 1 Monday evening or last Monday evening. I have not time to review that, but we're progressing on, on that front. We have easements and plaits for the Phase 1 needed for the right-of-way acquisition for the downstream sediment traps. That may take at least another additional two to four months of negotiating with the property owner along Spring Mountain Road. In addition, we have submitted a labor compliance program planned to the state for approval and concurrence, so that when we go into construction, we're in line with our grant. The other exciting news is we've received in writing our extension for the Bay Area grant, and the extension request for the EPA grant will follow in September. They requested us to wait until the end of the fiscal year, their federal fiscal year, which is September 30th, because they're trying to get grants awarded before then, and I wouldn't start the review process for the extension until at that time. And I believe that brings us up to date, but the construction for Phase 1 would be planned for early spring, as soon as we can get out there. That's an estimated project of $150,000. And then Phase 2 would follow up after that in the summer months. It would take, probably be closed out by October. And it's very exciting. The regular leaders are really excited about getting this project moved to the finish line. We're very close. We're bringing on Napa RCD to help with the permitting process of the mitigated monitoring required during construction, the pre-survey monitoring, and then the post-construction monitoring, and adaptive management plan that will be about at least 10 years post-project, similar to the flood control project. So, you'll be seeing a staff report coming on September 25th for bringing that, them onboard, because there'll probably be additional work following post-construction. And it'd be nice to have our local regional agency working on our brief benefit. They're excited about having this opportunity to work on the Upper York Creek.
Just one quick follow-up on that. As you mentioned sediment trap, it's probably self-explanatory, but you might just add a few words to what it is.
A sediment trap is, is logs that are laid across the stream, similar to what Sean Horn from the Napa County Flood Control Watership explained. When a natural tree falls across a creek or a river, it's not necessarily bad. If it's laid correctly, it won't capture debris, but it'll naturally capture sediment and release it during storm and rain events. So, there's, they're planning up to 30 sediment traps downstream of the Upper York Creek Dam that will gradually dissipate the sediment behind the dam. Instead of having to remove 30,000 yards of sediment, we may be allowed to remove like 8,000 to 12,000 yards and allow the rest to naturally carry downstream, as Mother Nature would intend it to. And so, part of the adaptive management plan post-project, we'll see how well that's working. And the NOAA fisheries have been very instrumental in helping us get to this point and helping us determine the number. They also, the, you know, they're looking at maybe recycling some of the trees that have been burned in the fires. There was concern that we'd lose out on this last year's fires, because the trees have been removed already. But unfortunately, we're still in fire season, so the opportunity to recycle some of the burnt wood is still a possibility.
Okay, good. All right. Any further questions? All right. Thank you very much. That next takes us to the consent calendar. 8.1 is being continued to the 9/11 meeting. So on consent is only 8.2, very short consent calendar. Is there a motion? Does anybody wish to remove 8.2?
I have a question on it, so I'd like to...
So, go ahead, please. Let me read what it is. 8.2 is adoption of a resolution to approve revisions to the planning commission bylaws, update in response to city council direction, and identified needs of the planning commission.
My question was, is there anything significant that changed on these bylaws that...
Not significant. There is an interesting change in the format of the meetings. The commission, at the recommendation of staff, has changed it to where both staff presentation and the applicant presentation are done successively, and then the commission asks questions. We were experiencing a lot of questions that would then be answered by the applicant's presentation, and so in the interest of trying to streamline some of the presentations, that was, changes made. But other than that, it's essentially changed to address the revisions to the process that the council adopted in July. Oh, I'm sorry, in June.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to, any public comment? Is there a motion to approve 8.2?
Still moved?
Second?
Call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Coburnstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Next item is new business, 10.1, quarterly grant report for fiscal year 2018, fourth quarter, ending June 30, 2018. Is that you, Ms. Mitz? Or is it Ms. Kellogg?
It is Ms. Kellogg.
Oh, there she is. Okay, good.
There we go.
Oh.
All right. Good evening. This presentation highlights the grant activity through June 30, 2018. Grants not mentioned in this presentation did not have any activity during this period. The city received $105,854 from Cal OES and public assistance for expenses related to the October 2017 wildfires disaster, which included overtime vehicle expenses and supplies purchased. There's a breakdown up there of which funds were reimbursed. It was determined based on the activity in the different departments. The city applied for a hazard mitigation grant in order to purchase generators for essential city facilities. If awarded, the total project is estimated to cost $660,900 and requires a 25% match from the city. The application was submitted to Cal OES by the deadline of July 2. A contract was approved by city council on May 22 to provide body worn cameras, services, and equipment in the amount of $48,116. A portion of the contract will be paid for using BSCC funds. The library broadband project, which included the installation of upgraded broadband equipment and cabling, was completed in April 2018. A reimbursement of $20,000 was requested from the California State Library and has been received since this report was prepared. As of June 30, nine applicants have been approved for home grants. Four owner occupied rehabilitation projects have been completed, and the city has recently requested a draw from the Housing and Community Development Department. The Upper York Creek project is moving forward in two phases. The total amount of grant funding available for the project is $1.8 million. These are reimbursable grants. The city requested and received a $5,000 draw during fourth quarter to cover design expenses for Michael Baker. The total amount of the city has received as of June 30 is $29,900 from the EPA grant. The city will be issuing an RFP for the design phase of the Main Street pedestrian improvements project. All of the design costs will be paid upfront by the city and are considered the city's contributions towards the funding of the project. The railroad avenue ADA ramps project is currently in progress. The reimbursement will be requested once the project is complete. The city has processed all payments related to the Friends and Foundation grant funds for fiscal year 2018, and the fourth quarter report was completed and submitted to the foundation. The city council approved a resolution on July 11 resolving that the work on the Pope Street bike lanes was accepted and complete. The reimbursement request was received in May of 2018. The city purchased 11 bulletproof vests in 2017 and received a reimbursement of 50% of the costs through the Bulletproof Vest program in May of 2018. And two organizations were granted a six-month extension for the nonprofit grants. They have till December 31 to spend the grant funds and submit their final reports. To date, $92,605 of the grant funds have been spent and reimbursed to the grantees. And for fiscal year 19, we've received and executed all 17 of the grant agreements since this report was prepared. Any questions?
I have a question with respect to the Department of Housing and Community Development home grant. Is there a timeline when that program will end?
Noah, can you recall the timeframe for that?
The home grant was $500,000 to the city, so I'm not recalling off the top of my head if there is a mandatory expenditure time period. One interesting fact about those funds is as they are repaid, the city loans the money out, gets reimbursement, and then as those funds are repaid over the course of the loan from the individuals, that actually money becomes the city's. And so we are recognizing an additional $500,000 in grants, but it's over a very extended time period.
And have there been additional public outreach since the beginning of this program so that folks know that this program is available? I think it's an excellent program, but I want to make sure that the community continues to know it's available.
Yes, NAPA's been doing a lot of outreach for the program, because it's actually being run by the NAPA Housing Authority, so they're the ones who are actually managing all the applications and doing all of the outreach for this program.
What kind of outreach are we talking about locally?
Sure. So we have, I've been in coordination with them somewhat. Primarily, the main push was letters mailed to the Voorhees Circle folks, and then they did an onsite meeting at Vineyard Valley. Other than that, I don't, I'm not aware of specific efforts regarding ongoing outreach. However, staff has, as we become aware of folks who may qualify, we encourage them to look into the program, and have provided the email contact to a few individuals that way. However, it is an excellent suggestion. We'll look into kind of expanding. That's right.
Any further questions from council?
I have a question. On the nonprofit grants, and this may go to our goals, it's going to come up a little later, but on the nonprofit grants, we were talking about at some point kind of restructuring how we implement those. Is that something you can answer now, or is that something to come up later?
It's actually in progress right now. I think...
We're almost finished, I believe. I may be the final bottleneck to the final draft for review.
Oh, great, okay.
So we're close.
Great. Well, thank you.
Mr. Doring and myself were on the council subcommittee, and we had a meeting back on May 20 with staff, and they've been moving forward since.
Yes.
All right. Any further questions? Is there any, you may sit down. Let me see whether there's any public comment. Any public comment? Let me close a public comment. I think we all understand the importance of proper grant administration, and appreciate the complexities of it, and appreciate staff's work at making sure that we execute properly grants from other governing authorities. It's very important that we do so, because we never want to find ourselves in the position we were in some years back before I became mayor. All right. Let me go to fiscal year 27, 2018, fourth quarter finance report. Ms. Mitz?
Thank you. This one is definitely me.
Okay.
I'll start out by saying I'm calling this my happy report for the general fund. In my almost four years that I've been here, we have never been in such a good position, so I'm very happy about that. And we have a new clicker that I'm trying to figure out how to use. Okay, how about you just advance it for me? Okay, so first we'll talk about the general fund net position, and these are all our estimated unassigned balances. Although the transactions, we've captured everything for fiscal year that's been posted through August, I believe it's 8th or 9th, I can't remember the exact date on it. Fiscal year ended June 30, we continue to post transactions, journal entries, end-of-year closeout entries for approximately three months until we actually have our audited financials completed. So the numbers that are presented tonight are your unaudited numbers, knowing there's still going to be a little bit of fluidity in it, but they shouldn't change too dramatically. So our ending balance as of 6:30, 2017, those are our audited financials, is $4.3 million. Our estimated revenues for fiscal year 18 are going to be $4.2 million. Our estimated expenditures is $12.5 million. Our net for revenues less expenditures is $1.7 million, leaving our unassigned net position at $6.1 million or 49%. Our council goal right now is currently 25% for the net position, so this is a dramatic improvement. Taking into consideration your fiscal year 19, which we're currently in right now, taking that into consideration, the unassigned net position should end around 43%, so we're still really strong for fiscal year 19. Some of the revenue and expenditures, where usually we have a balanced budget, where equal expenditures and revenues. Our revenues, we did decrease some slightly during our mid-year budget adjustment due to the October fires, because we were not sure how it was going to affect our TOT and sales tax numbers. Luckily, our sales tax numbers are actually higher than projected from our original projections, not including our reducing it. TOT numbers are higher than expected, and it's primarily because of Los Aquabos, because of them being online. We estimated the TOT for them for not full occupancy for the entire year. Their occupancy has exceeded what our projections were, so that was another reason. We did also receive, as Mandy mentioned in the grant report, $105,000 for expenses regarding the October fires. In addition to that, we did receive revenues for our strike teams that went out from FEMA and from OES. So that explains why our revenues are higher. Our expenditures, a lot of it had to do with really great fiscal management by all of our department heads. We'd also had some partial year vacant positions, and then our subsidy programs that the council authorized for our cares as well as our business subsidy. We had a lower number of participants than what we actually budgeted, so that's what led to our $1.7 million in excess.
Can I ask us one question on this? So the estimated unassigned net position, that's also, could be referred to as the reserve? Is that the same number? So 49%?
We have 49% reserves right now.
Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next slide, we will talk about the water fund. So again, we had our ending balance of $3.9 million, estimated revenues $5.8, estimated expenditures a little over $6 million, revenue less expenditures $214,000. Going into the fiscal year, we did know that was going to happen, because we had some transfers from the cash balance from the water fund going over to water CIP funds, so that is expected. Our estimated net position is $3.7 million or 61%, so we are on track for that. Our revenues came in a little bit lower than what we expected, but the reason for that is when we redid the rates that were adopted in November. During the mid-year budget review, I inadvertently did not include the rate, the revenue reduction based on the lower rates that we had. So that's why our revenues are showing a little bit short, when actuality for what the projections are, they're on track. For our expenditures, the reason why expenditures were lower than what we actually anticipated, again, some partial year vacant positions, there was some equipment that we ended up not purchasing, as well as we put funding aside for repair of machinery, and some of the machines we didn't need repairs on this year. Overall, our debt ratio, the magic number we are looking for for bond covenants is 1.2, so we are ending the year at 1.78, so that's great for our water fund. And then our wastewater fund, here's our net position, so $720,000 was our beginning balance. Again, revenues is $3 million, expenses $2.9 million, revenue less expenses is $152,000, estimated net position is $872,000 or 38%, and the debt ratio is 5, which again, our target is 1.2, so we're doing well for a 5, and that will go down once we start doing lending for our various wastewater projects. It is also important to note that while it looks like our revenues were higher than what we expected during the mid-year budget review, again, I did a revision to the revenue estimates, and I overstated how much that should have been. I think I put in there $530,000 when it was actually, should have only been reduced by $178,000. So that is our wastewater net position.
That's for half a year, the $178,000?
It's for a partial year. It's actually about five months, yes.
Five months, okay.
Correct. So an overview of our subsidies, just so the council and the public is aware what programs are put out there for the public to be able to provide assistance. Our St. Helena Cares Program, which is a low-income subsidy for the water wastewater side, this last fiscal year, we had 106 participants. In quarter four, we expended $12, a little over $12,000 from our general fund, and for fiscal year 17, 18, total was $45,000 that the city has provided to low-income residents. Leak adjustments subsidy, we had eight adjustments in quarter four totaling 424 units of water. In quarter four, we expended $2,500 from the general fund for a total amount expended in fiscal year 17, 18 of $8,600. And that concludes my fourth quarter report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any initial questions from council members? Let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak at public hearing? Let me close the public hearing. Any further council comment, other than certainly, it's wonderful to have a surplus rather than a deficit. I think what strikes me when I look at it is the very large importance that the local sales tax measured D revenue contributed to that. That was about $1.6 million. And then, as you pointed out, the departments did not spend what they were authorized to spend, and there's a good side to that, but in my mind, there's also a not-so-good side to that, because when we budget, we do, generally speaking, want the departments to spend what we budget, but sometimes it doesn't happen that way, but sometimes it doesn't happen the other way, too, or it happens too much the other way. So this happens to be one of those years when they didn't spend what they were budgeting. Those would be my observation. I guess my observation would be that had the departments spent what they were authorized to spend, and we didn't have the measured D revenue, we would have not been in this happy position. Is that right?
That is correct. And one important note, you made the mention the departments came in a lot lower for their spending. There is one department, and I do want to add clarification, that did come in higher, and that was the fire department, but that was solely because of the expenditures that we had for the cost of our firefighters to go out on strike teams. We did get reimbursed for that, for those funds, but we weren't able to do the budget adjustment in time. So I wanted to point that out, that the only reason they went over is because they were out serving the communities, helping with the fires.
Any other comments from council members?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I mean, I think that the kind of focus we've had over the last couple of years, and putting ourselves in this position, it speaks to staff working, staying focused, and it's great news, and just keep on the same track. It's great.
Any other comment? All right. That goes, that takes us to 10.3, consideration and discussion of the existing no parking zone on Main Street that affects the residents at 1820, 1830, 1846, 1856, 1862, and 1872 Main Street. And who's, is that you, Ms. Smithies?
Yes, it is.
I'm not fast enough with this computer to stay current here.
So this is an item that's been brought to council in the past. In 2010 and 2015, the council approved the proposed no parking zone left turn alignment. At the same meeting, council was providing alternate alignment to eliminate parking on the opposite west side of the street, and this is the location on Main Street, south of Pratt Avenue on Highway 29. The affected residents of the no parking zone were 1820, 1830, 1846, 1856, 1862, and 1872 Main Street. Earlier this year, we were, in June, we were approached by one of the property owners, actually two parcels, John Marshall, to see, now that the project's been in place for now a year and a half, if it was possible, look at the possible of switching the street back over. He followed up with a letter shortly after, and we're bringing this... We, he followed up with a letter shortly after, and we're bringing this item back to you for consideration. We did reach out to RSA, the original consultant for the Los Alcubis project, since there's a lot of design considerations of doing the flip to the southbound lane, a lot of design exceptions from the southbound traffic south of the Elm Tunnel that have somewhat changed at this point as far as there was trees in the way in the Elm Tunnel that Barringer has since removed. There is still a restriction at the historical bridge at York Creek that, that's a widening constraint, but it's possible that Caltrans would allow for the design exceptions on the width of the roadway, the shorter turn pocket on the southbound end to turn onto Pratt, and, but we'd have to revisit that, and it'd be about approximately $30,000. I get that ballpark figure from RSA. We also have John Marshall and, and I believe his wife and mother here to speak to it if you'd like to have them talk on the, on their issues they've had. One of the concerns that's been brought to us is about backing up all the driveway and onto Main Street, and that it was easier when there was parking on there. And then on the other side, the perspective is when they're backing up now, there is no traffic. You can see further up the road when you're backing out your driveway. So there's, there's two perspectives here on, on the ability, but then they'd also have parking in front of their homes. So there's safety considerations for both sides. The biggest concern is the, the cost incurred by moving back to the other direction and what Caltrans will allow us to do on Main Street. So we're, we're coming to you tonight for, for direction if we'd like to pursue that option and also hear from the public.
How long does it take to work with Caltrans to see whether they're willing to grant an exception, assuming we move forward with that?
From talks with RSA, it was a lot of work, but, you know, we've been with encroachment permits, we've had a good, good, good turnaround with, with Caltrans. This would be their whole transportation engineering division, traffic safety. So it could take six months, it could take a year. But we won't, we won't know if we don't start the conversation.
So that's the 30,000, and then if we were allowed to make the switch and made the switch, we would have, we would pick up the cost, I assume.
Correct. But the good news is if we were to be able to take the design considerations or the exceptions of Caltrans standard, it looked like it'd be more of a striping, a restriping project versus, versus, you know, replacing a historic bridge or widening a historic bridge, that's where it would come into huge monetary costs.
Okay, good.
And I was just, I don't know, I just dropped.
Has RSA done any preliminary calculations or realignment on paper at least?
They, they did the, so those were provided in the staff report and
That's what I thought.
And they're still the alternate, but those were never vetted out or fully designed, so that would be, you know, after they did some additional work, that would be another step, full designs and traffic study.
All right, any other initial questions?
So just to clarify, if, if Caltrans sees a way, it could simply be a restriping as opposed to structural work?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potentially. The biggest, I believe, is the, the line of sight there with the Barringer, but we still have the, 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 the bridge constraint, the width. And we also did notify, I don't know how many property owners are here, but we did hand-deliver door-to-door the staff report to both sides of the street. And so we know at the point, a couple of years ago, or three years ago now, that the southbound side was very pro the project, but there were, you know, mixed reviews.
All right. Any further initial comment?
Just a clarification, so you're saying that the, the southbound left-hand turn lane is the major issue of concern, is it, and it would have to be moved to the west slightly?
It'd be have to be moved, but the standard turn pocket is a lot longer than what is out there now. And that's the concern, that's what kicks it into the widening if the, if the Caltrans does not allow exceptions on that corner.
And coming out of the tree tunnel, I guess that would pose another potential hazard. I can see the issue.
The curvature.
Okay, yeah.
All right, let me open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak at public hearing with respect to this?
Mike Griffin, Park Street. The main issue up here is the safety. All those people that live on the east side of Main Street are elderly, and it's hard for them to back out and everything. All those residents are on septic systems. I've seen septic tank trucks service in, in the driveways, they have to drive in and back out. And it all started with Los Alcubis. That left-hand turn lane, southbound, has been there way before Los Alcubis was ever there, so I don't think there's an issue there. There's plenty of room to put the, the red line on the west side of Main Street from Elmhurst all the way to the bridge. Maybe shift that left-hand turn lane a little bit, it's not that big of a deal. It was all created with Los Alcubis. You open up the parking in front of the people on the east side of Main Street, Los Alcubis employees are going to be parking over there around the clock. They still park there. This bubblegum deal that they did at the 70 Adventist Church is not working. They're over on Park Street, they're on Pratt Avenue. So if you make the, the curb on the east side of Main, three-hour parking or permit parking or something to keep Los Alcubis employees from parking over there, then this whole thing would work. The other safety factors, I met with the city manager here about a year and a half ago up there, whatever, and he asked me, he says, what do you think could be done here to make this intersection safe, safer? Well, one is take the crosswalk out. Right now, you guys, they added the, the left-hand turn lane into Los Alcubis. So now the northbound Vine train stops in the northbound lane. You have a car turning left into Los Alcubis, nobody can get up northbound. It backs up clean to Madrona Avenue. If the, the bus isn't there and somebody's turning there, they're crossing the street in foot traffic, pop out behind the car that's waiting to turn because the southbound traffic doesn't let anybody turn left, and they almost get wheel-rolled out there. So my projection would be if you took the crosswalk like you did at Hunt Avenue and put it back down there where there is a crosswalk at the 70 Adventist Church at Elmhurst, and moved the bus stop down there where the southbound bus stop is already at, you're going to make the safety in that whole neighborhood a lot better and give the people back their, their parking on the east side of Main Street that they've had all their lives. And almost everybody that lives on that side of the street is elderly, and I, I see it all the time happen. I drive that, around that neighborhood all day long, and all you hear is squealing brakes, as someone trying to get run over in the crosswalk, or somebody backing out of their yard, and they're going to get hit. So, you know, safety's an issue, $30,000 is a drop in the bucket when you're talking about somebody's lives. I've been out there in accidents when I was in the fire department for 30 years here in the town. I picked a lot of people up off that street that got hit, and it's not fun, let me tell you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment?
Anthony McCallie, 1125 Cornellum. I hope the council does this and gives all those property owners the value of their property back, because when you took away their parking, you devalued all their properties for that hotel, and that wasn't the right thing to do. Today, I spent a little time talking to people on that section of the street, and I asked about that Vine Trail bus that Mike talked about, because it stops at the end of Main Street where it intersects Pratt. The red line for it to stop goes all the way to Pratt. They tell me nobody gets on that bus anymore. They used to, but there is no rider traffic now. And that'd be easy to verify by the city, to ask the Vine bus, who gets on there if anybody does? Because I know people that take it to Calasoga, but they don't get on there. And maybe instead of pushing it back like Mike would like to see on Main Street in front of somebody's else's house, if there is no rider membership there, make the last stop of the Vine bus in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Any further comment?
Hi, my name's John Marshall, and just for the record, I'm, I'm not the property owner. I'm, I'm here to speak on behalf of my family, my mother here, Paula Marshall, and our family has, my mom's owned that home for well over 30 years. I, I think there's a, I, I really didn't come prepared to, to speak of anything specific. I, I'm having a real hard time digesting the entire process since we've started. I've had some really good rapport, and I've had some not-so-good rapport or response back from, from people. I think that some of the decision-makers may not even be informed of exactly what's going on, and the, the defense was to be on the offense with me. I went to City Hall, and I was, I was humiliated in front of staff in, in regards to these concerns. Our, our family is coming and going frequently from this property. Like I said, we've been there for well over 30 years. I'm, I'm reading some of the background, and it says that included in the project description was, included in the project description was an installation of a left-hand turn lane. That may have been included, I'm kind of, I'm curious if it was mandated from Caltrans. So maybe the developers, maybe the designers, maybe city staff thought maybe this was a good idea. But my, my first question, I'd love to get an answer for later on down the road, is is it, is it mandatory for, for this left-hand turn lane to be there? Because before the hotel, there's been Barringers, which I would have to think that Barringer probably has a little bit more traffic than, than this hotel. You know, someone brought up something about a septic tank. Our, our next-door neighbor happened to have to install a new septic tank, and in their construction, they had no alternative except for to use our property next door because there was no way to get in and out of the property with the, the red zoning. So, you know, we are good neighbors, we're, we're extremely good residents and citizens of the city of, of St. Helena. We've, we've supported this. And when I say we, I'm going to speak on behalf of my mother and my father who's, who's passed. They, they support this town, they've, they've put signs in their lawns, they've, they've done everything politically, properly, professionally. They, they purchased their home, the family's been in real estate, they purchased from a local real estate person, they buy plants from a local nursery, and I'm a landscaper. I mean, there's been support here. I, I, I think that people understanding that, and I mean you people, understanding this is not, this is not for profit, but we're certainly not here for loss. We, we want to support everything going on around here. Our family's been involved with developments. We understand why the hotel was built, but it's not fair the way it was built on the impact to us. The, the septic system built next door would have never been done unless my mother was a good neighbor. They parked three trucks on her property, they went through a fence, they had to take the fence down, they got to put a new fence up. That's a good neighbor. We're not quite sure if we're going to come across that. We were fortunate enough to be the neighbor of the last project that we did. We just renovated the house, there were some structural issues, we had to put a roof on, we had to do some painting, we had some dry rot to do. And fortunately, we, we, my mother owns the house next door, and it happened to be vacant. So we had some parking, but with 14 vehicles, we were forced to park across the street. When I started talking to the guys at our tailgate, talking about the safety, we had to walk up the street towards the hotel, across the street, and then back down again. It took one crossing to realize that we are not going to do that. We're not going to go in the crosswalk that was given to us for safety, because the first time somebody walked across with a table saw in their hand, there was skid marks for about 75 feet. They couldn't see us, we couldn't see them. Am I really going to be regulated? Can I speak for my, on my mom's behalf? Was that all right?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So we, we had a skid that happened the very first time that I instructed people to use the crosswalk. So at that point on, we started walking across the street from the red zone, in the middle of the highway, it was a lot safer. So that crosswalk is not safe for pedestrians. I saw it several times. We have grandchildren, people have talked about the elderly, I appreciate you speaking about the elderly, but there's, you know, there's me and there's my grandkids too. I have a two-year-old that is going to walk across a crosswalk. I, we can't run fast enough. That crosswalk is not a very safe place. The value of the home was brought up also. We, we absolutely lost value. The hotel gained value, we lost value. I don't find that being very fair. There, there may be something, we can go somewhere in between. I spoke with a gentleman who's supposed, he told me he was the owner of the hotel, he made me some promises. I, I do not trust what they say, when they say, I'm going to be honest with you and look at me straight in the eyes. I'm, I'm the kind of guy that I want to look you straight in the eyes, I want to shake your hand, I want to believe you. But I was told, under no circumstance is he going to sell that hotel. This is his family's dream, this is where he's going to root in, and now I understand the hotel is for sale. So whatever you're hearing from these people at the hotel, I can't give them 100 percent. I don't think they're, they're forthcoming. I do not believe they're going to give you the, the truth. We're talking $30,000 on a place apparently that's, that's exceeded their, 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 their sales. The vacancies are, are much higher than what they expected. We are losing more than we thought. This whole thing was brought to us, we were blindsided by it. $30,000, if, if you want the $30,000 to get this thing moving, we're going to find the $30,000. I'm not going to commit my mother to it, I'm not going to commit to it myself. I, I absolutely guarantee you, like I said, if I look at you in the eyes and I shake your hand, I promise you $30,000 to be here to get this thing going. But I don't think it's our responsibility. I really think it's the responsibility of, of this city, this council, to make a decision to move forward with this. We don't have a money issue here. I really don't want to talk about a money issue here. I don't care. I have a two-year-old, I have a three-year-old, and I have an 85-year-old, okay, when everything in between. When my mother backs out on that road, I know what it's all about because I did it. I did it since May 23rd. We had some city staff come out graciously, I appreciate that. The city staff witnessed people having to double park, straddle red curbs, be inconvenienced, we saw skidding, we saw, it's, it's a fiasco. And I think the, the reason, what I first said in the very beginning here was I'm, I'm a little bit confused why we're even going into this. The people across the street from us want the red curb. We don't want the red curb. We're talking about a minor lane adjustment, and we're talking about some trees that were already taken down, not really in the right process, but they got taken down. From what I understand, there hasn't been a lot of public outrage with the trees being removed. A bridge that needs to be extended possibly, a historic bridge? Yes, sir.
Yeah, no, that's all right. Can you get to your ending thoughts, though?
Well, I, I don't really have an ending thought, sir. What I have is a lot of thoughts. And unfortunately, we're, we're restricted to four minutes and eight minutes, and maybe I'll take my wife's time to be 12 minutes. I'm not here to, to waste your time. If I, I, I will not repeat myself, that's not what I'm here to do. What I want to do is I want to be heard, and I would like for everybody here to listen. We have a continual nuisance, safety issue in front of our house. The reason that our house was vacant next door, allowing us to park three cars on that property, is because the tenants moved out. They had children, they had to back out, and they couldn't park. They had to drive around a neighborhood to come back to the same drive where they started at so the wife can get out. The husband had to do, do the rigmarole. So there's a big property loss. I believe the gentleman's name was Go Nate. He was the first person that I got a chance to talk to. He assured me that he would give us the money to extend our driveways. I don't want to extend our driveways, I don't want to lose the, the landscape in front of the houses, it doesn't make any sense. It's not going to bring any appeal to the city, it's not going to bring any appeal to us. Let's just take that money from him that he promised to us, we'll see if he sticks to his promise, and put the $30,000 there. To extend a culvert, which is really what this bridge thing is all about, it's a big piece of metal round that sticks underneath a roadway. I did a cost estimate on it was, I'm not exactly sure how big it was, but I went to an 80-inch culvert, and I extended it 12 feet, which is probably way more than we're talking about. We're talking about a $2,000 piece of metal. I'm, I'm counting right now $5,000 in some paint and a $30,000 research. I'm asking the staff, I'm asking the council with all due respect to please sit back for a minute, read the letter we sent to city staff, acknowledge what we did, don't ignore it, don't dismiss me, don't dismiss my mother, my family. I really want you to think about this. It's not a big deal to move a red curb from one side to the other. And I'm not talking about ignorance as my last statement. I worked for Public Works for 10 years. I understand how it all goes. This is not something that this staff can't handle, I'm sure of it. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? All right, let me close.
Mark, Andrade, 1025 Pratt Avenue. Very familiar with the intersection also, and I just want to state my support for what, what they're saying, and at least then you guys considering moving forward with the $30,000 to moving forward with the $30,000 to at least investigate how to move forward with it.
Right, thank you very much. All right, let me open it up for council discussion, and let me respond very directly here for myself, which is, I absolutely agree that we should spend the $30,000. There are lots of issues here. I thought the discussion this evening, including the safety discussion, was very interesting, including three-hour parking. There are lots of issues here, but we need to move forward and see whether we can accommodate what you've suggested, at least that's my view. Mr. White?
Same here. I know when this got brought back to the city council in 2015, it was a reconsideration of opening up the, or to refresh the SEQA document on something that had been decided in 2010. But, I mean, if this can be done now that the two trees are out, and if Caltrans will allow us to do it, I'm all for it. And I have no problem with the investigation and see what we can come up with. And in the meantime, I'm willing to talk with NVTA and get that bus stop moved or eliminated. I didn't even realize there was one there, but that's a crazy place to stop a bus.
Mr. Doring? Oh, Ms. Coburnstein?
We can tell it's election season. I think it'd be good if we could all have a little discussion before we announce a decision. I definitely support this. I think that it was an unfortunate result. It probably never should have happened in the first place. And we are now sitting here with very sufficient reserves. I think that one good thing to do with them is to use them on infrastructure projects and to spend the money on things that can actually make a difference in how people can live in this community and enjoy their property. So I fully support this, and we'll see how it turns out, but I have no doubts we should do it.
All right, Mr. Ellsworth?
I concur. I think it's a good idea to look at the red zone and also include the crosswalk, what it would look like to have the crosswalk moved down to the Elmhurst area, and also look at the parking limits, the three-hour parking, what that would take. So if we're moving forward with the red zone study, to also include those issues, too.
The only further comment I would have is I do believe NVTA, with its current software, keeps track of where people get on and off those buses, so that's quickly ascertainable. Yeah. So I think the direction to staff is pretty clear from, oh, Mr. Doring, I thought you'd spoken to this. No? I looked your way.
I agree pretty much with what everyone has said so far. It is an issue that we can probably resolve. I think $30,000 is probably not going to be enough. I really am concerned about, well, a couple of issues. One of them is going to be unintended consequences. So those people who are parking across the street now are probably going to end up around the corner, and somebody, some other neighbor's going to have to deal with that. That's a Los Alcoas issue. That's a city issue. We have to deal with that. It's unintended consequence, but we'll have to deal with it. But I am very sympathetic to your plight, but I recognize right away that that crosswalk has to be removed. You don't come out of the tree tunnel and face a crosswalk at certain times of the day. I go back and forth to my office in Calistoga, and, you know, I've learned, of course, because I'm a local, that you have to slow down there. You have to be aware of employees, mostly from Los Alcoas, but everything else, you know, and young children. So that should be part of it, and if need be, I would say we should give some more authority, at least another $10,000 on that issue, unless that's already combined within the $30,000. I think we have to study that. And I believe several months ago, we had, we've had a couple of discussions about slowing down the traffic there, doing some traffic sort of, you know, mitigation measures. And so all of that needs to be sort of brought together in sort of a one package for us so it's not piecemeal. And maybe you could speak to that.
I would like to. I do have an update. We were going to try to bring it up this meeting tonight, the outcome of the crosswalk review that GHD provided for us. And they were quite ready for a final report, hoping to bring it to the end of September or first of October. But they weren't recommending a very enhanced crosswalk, but just enhancing the signs because right now there's not really enhanced signs or a continental crosswalk in that crossing. It's been there for quite a number of years. And so you just can't remove a sidewalk or crosswalk. People will still utilize it if that's where they walk every day. We do have ped counts from that.
We've done that right downtown. We've removed a couple of crosswalks just recently, so it's not that unusual right in the heart of our town.
But you had.
I still stopped there after I passed the crosswalk expecting to have another crosswalk, so I need to get adjusted to that.
But it was flipping an intersection, not completely taking a crosswalk out of the intersection. But, of course, can be revisited, but as a different consultant, so I wanted to confirm. And then we also have the radar sign that encroaching permit on that first review is in the Caltrans right now for approval for installing a radar saying, flashing for the southbound traffic, saying, "Slow down. You're over the speed limit entering the city." So.
I think you have enough, at least, concern here that that crosswalk should be removed. And frankly, the argument that it's been there for a while doesn't sit well with me. I think obviously there was a time in this community where there was a lot fewer cars. People were a little bit more low-key. Now you've got heavy congestion. A lot of people are in a hurry. Folks coming out of that tree tunnel. That, to me, is a public safety issue. I mean, I look at it as a lawyer and going, "Wow, oh, gosh." That has to be studied, eliminated. And I think I'm trying to be a little more forceful so that that doesn't just kind of die down, and if we need to get another engineer to say, "Yeah, that..." Just my instinct says that that is not a correct place for a crosswalk, and my experience. So, but I'll leave it up to the experts because I am not one, so you're hearing from a lot of people saying that that crosswalk is a problem, and I'd hate to have another issue there, a pedestrian fatality, frankly.
Can I just, just in support of that, the idea I'm thinking is if we look at, you know, moving that crosswalk further south, as was suggested, sort of towards the Elmhurst area, looking at the red zone change, but regardless, people coming out of that tree tunnel, coming fast into town, some measure of awareness, whether it's a sign or whether it's, so that the traffic begins slowing down as it's coming through the tree tunnel and not rocketing out of it, regardless of what, I mean, hopefully the crosswalk can be moved, but even if it's moved, some indication that this is a good time to begin slowing down at the, as they are in the tree tunnel before they exit.
Wasn't that the discussion about the speed sign?
Correct. That's in play right now with Caltrans for approval for installation. So the speed sign is with Caltrans. They have sixty days' review, so we're close to probably hearing back from them. And then, and then either, would you prefer we stick to the current consultant that did the prior RSA, did the prior review of this, or would you like us to go to the similar consultant that we're using now on that intersection that's been studying it recently?
Well, my thought is, is to authorize the $30,000 tonight, and then if we, and then perhaps at the next meeting, you can have a very brief staff report with your recommendation on that so we can move it right along.
Okay.
You know, to me, to me, it's staff's judgment as to which is more efficient.
And what I'm anticipating is we can get started now with the direction tonight, but we'll need to bring back an amendment to a contract. We can sign contracts up to twenty-five, so we can get started under the current authority within the budget and then bring you back an amendment for whatever that nexus is.
Okay. My suggestion for engineers is whoever you think is the best to work with Caltrans, whether it's RSA or GHD or, yeah.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. That takes us to 10.4. And that's an annexation issue. And that's Ms. Metz.
Actually, I'm passing it over to Erica. I just reviewed the staff report.
Oh, sorry.
This item was previously heard on July 24th. It was the annexation of 1025 and 1045 Pratt Avenue to the St. Helena Municipal Sewer District. At the meeting, the city council requested additional information with city staff with regard to the Cornellum Pump Station's current capacity and ongoing odor issue prior to moving forward. Following the meeting, the property owner, Mark Andrade, who's here tonight, submitted a letter requesting that council reconsider the item at the next available council meeting. Due to the timing, we did not get it scheduled until this evening. And we also had an update from our consultant that's currently updating the pump station upgrade project, Rico, and they provided a white letter that's been attached to this that addresses the available capacity, which there is adequate capacity for the existing homes that are planned to connect. And then we also have at least implemented one of the temporary solutions for ongoing order issues with odors, and that's been providing a plastic gasket over the open pit, as you say, inside the pump station. I do have Felix Hernandez as well, who's the utility operations manager, who's been helping oversee the implementation and additional improvements that we can make in the short term until we can get the full upgrade done at the sewer, the Cornellum Pump Station.
All right. Any initial questions by council? Let me open it to the public hearing. Is there anybody who wish to speak to this at public hearing?
Mike Griffin, Park Street. Basically, I'm not against the gentleman here hooking to that line. He's already there. His other house is on it, and that was put on by the first developer, which he, I don't know if that was who he bought it from or whatever. But I do know for a fact that there's a second developer involved that is hooked into that line that you're talking about, the annexan, down on the other side of them. There's two more houses I know for sure that are hooked into it because that second developer, we're supposed to help the first developer do some upgrading in the pump station, and it never happened. As it stands right now, you have seventeen residents that has the potential to hook in to the Cornellum system, some, by some means, either going through that line or another line. You have eighteen off of Main Street that could come in to the Park Street side. What I'm basically asking is, you know, let this gentleman get on with his project. He's been, you know, playing around enough and everything. He's been nice. He's moved his footprint of his house away from the other houses that we had a problem with. Let him get going with it. But don't allow anybody else to hook in to any part of Cornellum Substation Sewer at all until the thing is fixed, upgraded. If it works, it works. If it doesn't work, then fix it again, whatever the case may be. They just moved in a big giant water tank that probably holds more water than Bell Canyon for development that's starting down at the end of, down Pratt Avenue further past the rail tracks. You know, their sewer stuff isn't going to go in there, but going back a little bit to the issue of Pratt Avenue safety, there's your, there's more added to that intersection. But getting back on the sewer, the smell hasn't gone away. Two Saturdays ago, it was unbearable. Then it goes away, comes back again, so, you know, maybe your fixes are helping it a little bit from time to time, but what I'm after is just no more hooking into that sewer whatsoever until all this is fixed. Don't hold this guy up in his project. Let him get going. You have another project that's going to come before you that's right behind me. Donna Hyde sold that property. She was told by the planning commission, with her plans of being adopted by the city, that she could hook to the city sewer. Now, here are two stories. No, she can't. Yes, she can. She has to go up her driveway all the way to Park and Pratt to hook into it, or tunnel or trench through a neighbor's yard into Cornellum. Well, now, what's going to happen when that new developer, the new owner of that property comes before you with a new set of plans? He has nowhere to go to for sewer because the footprints of the houses they're building on that flag lot won't allow a septic system. And we just found out how easy it is to get hooked into that there with the 1872 Main Street saying that their septic system failed. It failed by someone going back there, landscaper, digging up the sewer system. And then the city doesn't cooperate with the, back and forth with the county, because the county does the septic systems. They say, "Okay, it's broke. Can't be fixed." You allow them to hook it up because you're looking at their $25,000 hookup fee or whatever you charge. So now we have one more in there that should have never happened because there was nothing wrong with that septic system. We just, my family just spent $15,000 to fix it two years ago. So there was nothing wrong with it. So that's how easy it is to get in here. So all I'm saying is let this guy do his project, but don't let any more hook into the system until it's fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Thank you.
All right. Let me close a public comment. Any? Oh.
He agrees.
I agree. Let me do my project. So with this whole thing is I do understand the smell issue, and the only point that I want to make on all this is that in through this process, which has been a five-year process for me to get to this point, and I've done, as I said, everything I could to be neighborly, adjust, change, do whatever. I'm at that point, so I would love for you to reconsider and allow me to hook up, and then I understand that the smell is an issue, but in that note, it's going to take us a while to build the house, but I can't start building it until I know I can hook up and be able to hook up to the sewer. So all of the things that I presented to Erica and going through this, and Erica, we spent many hours together to show that I had easement rights and all the stuff and the lots that were allowed by the city council, I'm assuming, at one point back in time. So, but anyway, I just would like to say, please reconsider and allow me to move on with my project. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
How long is it going to take to construct the house and then you would actually be occupying it?
Ten to twelve months.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, but just a comment on that is, because, right, the annexation, I can't proceed forward without being annexed, and so I don't know if that was where you were going with it, but, okay. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Let me close the public hearing and invite any council comment. Ms. Coburnstein?
I think when we first visited this, we had two issues. One was capacity, and the other was odor. And there was a little confusion about what our codes required us to do, but all we're doing tonight is deciding to have a public hearing, as far as I understand. And I can certainly vote for that and keep this project moving along. When you get a letter like we received from the property owner here reciting how long it's taken to do something, I don't want to be in the way of preventing something more from happening, particularly when it's going to probably be a year before this house even connects and has plumbing facilities that are going into the Cornellum Pump Station. So I would favor moving ahead.
Mr. Doring?
Well, I would move approval of the staff's recommendation.
All right. Mr. Ellsworth, do you have any comment?
Yes, and I agree, and I, you know, in favor of moving forward and having the hearing and allowing the project to move forward. But I do want to recognize, and I went over to that area, and I do want to recognize the concern is that if we have an older sewer system and we have a great number of homes that are connecting in, and I don't know how many of the homes along Pratt are actually connected already, and which ones aren't, and if those that aren't want to be connected, how much capacity do we have? Are we fixing the system to a point that will accommodate those homes? It's a bigger question, particularly when you start looking down at Main Street as well, where the homes are all on septic there as well. But I think if we have this issue, you know, we're doing our Water Sewer Master Plan, we're trying to relook at our systems. This area, I think we need to sort of quantify what we're looking at. What are the potentials on that system? If we're fixing the pump house and this odor problem, are we doing it in a comprehensive way that'll cover additional units coming on? And as we saw, the emergency issue that came up a few weeks ago, then we And as we saw, the emergency issue that came up a few weeks ago, then we have one more on. And then, at what point are we at capacity? So I think just having a good study of this area will be helpful, but I have no problem moving this forward at this point.
All right. I'll second Paul's motion. All right. Roll call please.
Mr. Mayor, before we do, there's a slight typo in paragraph three of the resolution. It should, this is the resolution that was carried forward from the previous meeting. Number three should indicate that the hearing date will be September 11.
Okay. Very good.
With that change.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Coburnstein?
Yes.
Ms. Galbry?
Yes. Okay. That takes us 10.5. Consideration of authorizing safety exceptions for the large truck ordinance to entities within the city through an application process and... Chief and Bowden?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for giving me a couple minutes. So as you're aware, we have a large truck ordinance in town that prevents vehicles that meet a certain criteria from deviating off of, direct route off of Main Street to get to whatever location they're trying to get into in town to either deliver or pick up goods. While we're enforcing that ordinance, it's come to our attention that there may be a need for a safety-related exception to the ordinance. In the staff report that I gave you, I outlined one example of what could potentially occur as a safety issue. However, what I'm talking about tonight and the intent of that staff report is not to point out one particular issue, but to speak to a potential predicament for businesses in general in town. And so I don't want to focus on that one scenario, that one scenario that I gave you. There are other potential scenarios in town that I've thought of. I'm sure there's many others that I haven't thought of. The businesses in town that are having to navigate this disordinance probably can come up with some, potentially some other scenarios. My concern is that if we don't do anything, don't allow for any kind of exception, and there is a legitimate safety concern brought to our attention, what remedy do we have at this point? And right now, the answer is we don't. We tell the truck driver that they have to continue following that ordinance and potentially taking what may be a less safe route to get to their destination. And so what position does that put the city in if we force a vehicle down a road that's not as safe as an alternate route and something happens, either a collision or somebody gets injured? So with that in mind, I'm asking the council for some direction on whether or not you would like a draft truck ordinance safety exemption waiver process brought back or brought forward to you for consideration. I'm willing to answer any questions if anybody has any.
And that would then put the city council in the position of authorizing a waiver upon the recommendation of the police department, if that was in the ordinance, is that...
If that was in the ordinance, I didn't get any specifics on what the ordinance or what the waiver would look like.
Right.
There's all kinds of potentials. I know that we've, there's been some discussion about the noise ordinance waiver, but a process similar to that, whether it's through the police chief or a designee or a council or the committee, there's all kinds of options that would be what would be brought back to you in a draft ordinance, or there could be several options in that ordinance that could be whittled down.
Okay. Thank you. Any other initial questions? All right. You may be seated, and let me open it up to public comment.
Mark Smithers of Vallejo Street. I'm going to read the letter, the email I sent to all the city council and city manager and Chief and Bowden for the benefit of the public that maybe hasn't seen that. With all due respect to our police chief and the efforts that were involved in the report for the city regarding truck ordinance, I need to add some facts and some observations and possibly corrections. And I understand the chief is now saying he doesn't want to speak as quite specifically to the example, but the example's there, and I think it's being used as a method or a way of suggesting we do need to have a waiver. So the memo states that the letter of the law, the required route for, the required route for this particular example is Grayson to Birch to North Crane, and this is 8 point, this is .8 miles from Main Street, Highway 29, to the North Crane businesses in the example. However, by the letter of the law, the correct route is Mitchell to North Crane, which is .5 miles from Main Street and Highway 29. Based on objective observation, turning from Main Street to Grayson is no more difficult than turning from Sulfur Springs, as quite often vehicles coming from Zumwalt Ford or the nearby neighborhood are also at the limit line wanting to turn left and north on the Main Street. The presence of a light at Grayson actually makes it safer for large trucks to turn off of Main Street, as they do not need to turn in front of any oncoming traffic. Please note that turning onto Mitchell from Main Street doesn't present the limit line issue noted in the report, since the traffic's not allowed to turn left and north on the Main Street. So it's actually, it eliminates both the observations that were made. The Grayson Street route does pass by both the high school and the primary school, as noted, but let's not lessen the safety concern of passing by Little League and the tennis courts with camps for kids and all the walkers and bikers along South Crane as opposed to Grayson Street. The primary school is not an issue for the children on Grayson, on the Grayson Street route, as the children are not standing beside the street or racing across the street as they do on South Crane. Parents drop off kids and pick up their young children on Grayson Street via vehicle pullout that is at least 70 feet off of Grayson and beyond the parking lot, providing significant safety for any large trucks on Grayson Street. This cannot be said for South Crane. Grayson Street has a sidewalk fully on the south side that allows students traveling to and from the high school to be safe from large trucks, should they be walking or riding their bike. This is not, this cannot be said for South Crane. There is a limited walkway for a couple of hundred feet, but this doesn't help the people that are parking on the west side of South Crane or Vallejo Street and those that are walking on Sulfur Springs or South Crane. South Crane and Sulfur Springs, for the most part, have no sidewalk safety. South Crane and Sulfur Springs are just as narrow and maybe more narrow than Grayson Street. Those streets don't have any no parking zones, while most of the north side of Grayson is no parking from 7:00 to 3:00, which is when the large truck traffic is traveling, based on the example. Sulfur Springs and South Crane are residential roads as much as Grayson is a residential road. In fact, Sulfur Springs Grayson route, South Crane route, has 40 residential units versus the Grayson route with just 26. Sulfur Springs, South Crane, has a number of elderly, handicapped, and young children enjoying where they live. And then there's the farmer's market Friday and the Little League days, when South Crane is lined on both sides for a great length, making it very dangerous for large trucks to be traveling down South Crane. I don't feel the truck ordinance has created unintended consequences at all. I don't think we need to make available a safety exemption waivers. I'm going to go ahead and continue. I'm almost done.
Please finish up.
No residential street is safe for large extended semi-tractor trucks. Large trucks cannot successfully make the turn from one street to another without going into the other lane on nearly all the streets, because these are neighborhoods, they're not industrial zones. Keeping large trucks to the shortest route increases safety and reduces our cost to maintain our roads. The example noted may have been okay if they continued with the one to two trucks deliveries a week that they provided when they received their approval. However, the noted business now has two to three large trucks deliveries a day. There are solutions. They can request their suppliers deliver with smaller trucks or double tractor trailers that can more easily maneuver compact residential streets, or they can stage their deliveries from industrial areas on small flatbed vehicles which they own. And quite frankly, if there's any other streets that are posing this safety waiver potential, they can do the very same thing. So there are solutions to not require any waivers at all. Providing the potential for an exception to the truck ordinance will open the door for the mess that we had on our residential streets before it was implemented. The ordinance went through a long and public process and was not opposed by anyone. Our neighborhoods and the safety of small children that do not have the recognition ability or reaction of the older high school students are better now that we have a truck ordinance. I and the primary school children, the playground is just off of South Crane, and these small children's lungs are still developing and therefore most at risk, enjoy not having to breathe in diesel and small particulate matter as a result of the truck ordinance. So thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smithers. Any other comments?
Anthony McKelley, Cornellum. I just have one question. Is the truck ordinance in effect now?
Yes.
How come the trucks still go through Park? We have a volunteer with the police department, lives on Park. I asked him, can't you give that guy a ticket? He's either on our street or he's not. He was told he cannot issue any tickets. So in order to catch a truck, you have to call the police department. The truck's already gone by the bearers, sitting over there, and they keep doing it. And nobody enforces this ordinance. I mean, I was told the Google Maps had to be changed first. Then I was told there had to be signage put up. I don't know if, I haven't seen any signs yet, but maybe there are out there, but that's why I was told it wasn't in effect. And they continue to abuse the ordinance. I mean, when is somebody going to get tough on this? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Chief and Bowden, would you like to respond to that briefly?
With respect to what Mr. Smithers had to say, I don't have anything to respond to that, other than that would be the type of conversation that would be had to determine whether or not a waiver was due, not whether or not a waiver should be created. As far as Mr. McKelley's concerned, you know, a lot of things happen. If we don't see them, we can't catch them. We can't issue a citation if we don't see the violation. If somebody calls and tells us about the violation, and by the time we get there, the violation is over, there's not a whole lot we can do. Volunteers are not authorized to issue citations for this. They can issue parking tickets, they can't issue meaning code violations. And as far as when are we going to start issuing citations? We've issued four. We've given six warnings. We started out issuing citations and we got in trouble, and we're told to issue warnings instead, so, for first-time offenses. So we issued some warnings. You know, it's not that we're not out there stopping them, but if we can't see them, we can't, we can't stop them.
Okay. Good. Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Let me close public comment and invite council discussion. Mr. White?
Yeah, Mr. White. Thank you. I agree that we should give direction to staff to come up with the ordinance, I mean, a safety exemption waiver process that we can take a look at and consider. I think if it is a safety problem like the chief says, then I don't think we can ignore it. I don't think we can just stay with the letter of the law if we're creating a bigger problem.
Mr. Ellsworth?
Part of what we're looking at is we've got a situation where there's an increased industrial use in a residential community. And so we're seeing a, two separate things working at cross purposes. To me, the safety of the community, I keep using this example. An indicator that we're doing something correctly is that a child can get on their bike and ride their bike across town, and their parents are comfortable with that. That tells me we're operating correctly, because that's a very sensitive indicator, like a canary in a coal mine, as an example. So that we're striving for that. And so I think that was what brought the truck ordinance about. And I think if we do not stay focused on why we brought it about, what we're trying to accomplish, then we'll continue having these problems. We've got to establish a method or a pattern that addresses the fact that we have a community that lives here, that are raising their kids, that want their kids to feel safe, not just from the physical or the large object rolling down the street, but also the fumes and the particulate matter. So the strategies of perhaps identifying some staging areas where smaller vehicles can offload from larger trucks, particularly if, when a business got started, they were anticipating a certain amount every week, and they're prospering and their business is growing, but it's growing in an area where it wasn't intended to grow. So having, looking at some other strategies of laying out where we can stage and talk about smaller trucks pulling off the material and delivering it. So either way you go, whether it's Grayson or Sulfur Springs, you're going to have the same issue of an industrial use encroaching or growing, I won't use the word encroaching, but growing in a residential area. So it's a, at this point, I'm not in favor of having a waiver. I'm in favor of looking at other strategies so that we can keep heavy truck traffic limited in our town, to the extent that we can.
Coburnstein?
I think we should examine this, but I think it's a little more nuanced than the way it was presented to us. I think we need more information. For instance, I'd like to really know what is the geometry of these two intersections we're talking about. We're being told it's easier to make the turn on Grayson than it is on Sulfur Springs. I assume we could be presented with some data that would show that, the width of the street. I mean, at Grayson, we have a signalized intersection with a protected left turn signal. So is that really the case? Yes? No? It's something I would like to be examined. As far as safety and the school, I tend to agree with Mr. Smithers on the primary school kids. I think they are, Grayson is maybe actually more safe for them. But we also have to keep in mind the hours that the school's in operation and the months of the year that it's in operation. You know, there are many weeks when there's no kids there at all, or times of the day when they're not there. And I think that if we're going to set up some kind of procedure, it'd be good to know what time of day are the trucks coming in, and is there that conflict or isn't there? You know, I do agree, we should maybe look at the holding zone issue, or whatever you want to call it. It seems to be what, for this business owner, makes the South Crane preferable, because the truck can pull over and wait. And I do see no parking signs on Grayson. I don't know if that's because the primary school is there, or if it's for some other reason. But I would like to develop more criteria and understanding of the route. I don't see Mitchell or Spring really as alternative routes. I think we're kind of down to these two. And that if a business requested this exemption, there would be certain information that would come forth, you know? How many trucks? How often? Does it vary during the year, or is it constant all the time? And not just sort of a blanket exemption. So I'd welcome, you know, more information from staff on this.
Mr. Doring?
Once again, the city council is presented with an issue where there's not a clear answer and that some people may not be happy with the result, and others may be happy with the result. So everything that's been said makes perfect sense to me. He said one thing, he said another, but they both are acceptable arguments, and I find this issue extremely perplexing, because there are a lot of moving parts. I don't think that the truck ordinance itself is going to solve all the problems that we have here with respect to this use. It is a use that is, it's an important contributor to our economy. Let's face it. This particular business is extremely important. There's a whole history of how it got here and what it's doing now, and I don't pretend to know all the background about that. The safety issues are immense. No matter where you go, you're going to see a safety issue by the primary school. You're going to see, in my view, an equally important safety... have here with respect to this use. It is a use that is, it's an important contributor to our economy, let's, let's face it. This particular business is extremely important. There's a whole history of how it got here and what it's doing now, and I don't pretend to know all the background about that. The safety issues are immense. No matter where you go, you're going to see a safety issue by the, the primary school. You're going to see, in my view, an equally important safety issue at the high school, because, well, and so, I think, I'm wondering, I'm also, I think it's important to give some discretion to our, to our law enforcement, to call them as they see them. If they, they feel in their heart of hearts that there's a, a need for a waiver, who are we to make that determination? They're out in the field, and they see it. I'm a little bit concerned about that. But at the same time, and I'm saying "and," it's not an "or," at the same time, we need to investigate these issues. I would think we need to work with the school to make sure, well, to inquire whether there's another, there are many things that we need to work on, but one example is the offloading of children near the, near the primary school. Could they possibly pull into the parking lot? Could it be safer? Do those kids have to go across the street to meet their parents? I mean, that to me is a, I didn't even know that that existed. That to me is unfathomable, or there's got to be a better way to pick up students. I do see issues with high school students walking across the street around the high school, because I'm there a lot, you know, and darting out, there seem to be more, many more distractions on Grayson, frankly. I see the, the issue of a staging zone for, for the trucks, and a potential, trying to find a potential place for these trucks to stage, so they're not waiting in front of somebody's house on Bird Street, which causes another issue for us. So, this is a, a puzzle, and I think, so, I, I'm mindful of all of the safety issues, but I'm also concerned that we don't give at least some authority to our local law enforcement, that their hands are tied when those issues come up. And I'm not only looking, I know we're all focused on this one business, I'm hearing that there are other areas in town, and I want to be mindful of that. So, I think there's much more study. I agree with Mary, Councilmember Koberstein, that, that's right, that there are a lot of moving parts here, and there are a lot, a number of issues in terms of the trucks and what they can do. There's a letter from the business owner, a response letter. One of the points that they made that is, is of concern to me is the turn on the Valley View is a problem, and that you eliminate that if you don't have to do that. That's a tough turn right there. You're going in, into oncoming traffic, kids in the morning, that's one issue. I also know that, you know, it isn't that easy to just make a truck smaller, smaller deliveries. Most people in the business of deliveries are delivering from a lot of different businesses, through a lot of different businesses. So, they're not just delivering one, you know, a half a load for this particular business. They're, they're doing other things. So, I'm not sure that makes sense, it's possible, but I doubt it. I guess, just in a nutshell, I think, I, I would like to see the waiver, but I'd also like to see further investigation about all these nuanced issues on this particular issue, because no matter what we do, we're going to make people unhappy. And you don't want to make things more unsafe, you want to try to reduce it. That's really the goal, to make things more safe in some way. And I, I'm kind of feeling like I need some, we need to give some discretion to our, our law enforcement, but also work on these issues and study them more. This is just going to get worse, not better, unless we kind of figure out with the business owners, with the property owners, with the school district, are there other solutions that we have not thought about, and I don't know what they are.
For myself, I have very little to add. I see, I can perceive the need for a waiver process. I'm very concerned about the administration of a waiver process that could effectively weaken the ordinance that we have, tentatively, if there were a waiver process. To me, the waiver would be granted by the city council upon the recommendation of the police department, and a true showing that there was a safety concern that warranted it. I don't particularly wish to get into the specifics of Grayson versus Valley View. I bicycled down Valley View, and if I had my way, there would never be another truck on it, because it's very difficult already to bicycle down a street where you can't look out, you can't look through your mirror without seeing any, with, with any visibility, because your bicycle's bouncing around so much. But to me, to me, to me, I'm very worried that any exception would swallow the rule. But on the other hand, we have to be sensitive to safety concerns, and in a clear case, I think we have, we should have a waiver process, and I agree that, that perhaps the best way to go is to study further what some of the criteria might be that would have to be considered in, in presenting a waiver via the police department to the city council for consideration. That's sort of my tentative thinking on the matter.
You know, I'm not, I'm not one that believes it would have to come to the city council. I mean, that's why I'm kind of looking for some standards, just so that we don't have blanket waivers. You know, that maybe you have a waiver during these hours of the day, this, this month of the year, or whatever. And I'd be very comfortable having it be done administratively, as long as there was some checklist or something that you go through. Pity the poor person who has to wait for two more weeks to get on our agenda, just to get the waiver, you know. I don't know that we're going to add anything to the decision, so, that's, I, but I, I don't think we need to.
I said my, you know, I said my views were tentative, and you may well be right, that we can develop a, a list of criteria such that it can be, such that it can be done administered, but administratively. But I would assume, maybe I'm wrong about this, but I would assume that any denial of a waiver could be appealed in any event to the city council. Just, would that be right? Under your existing ordinance, it would be.
I've got another comment. So, you know, I'm, I want to support our businesses and see them prosper, so this, that's not what, what this is about for me, in terms of, you know, I want to be supportive, but I also, there's a term that came up called livability, and I want to make sure that we're keeping our town a livable town. And this is a really tough balance, because we've got this, this wonderful industry that brought a lot of prosperity to the area. It's, it's been a great thing, it's what I grew up in. And so, I'm supportive of that, but it's also, we've got a municipality here, and a town. So, there's two sort of distinct things going, going back and forth. So, my, yeah, I like the idea of looking at criteria, but at the same time, looking at alternative strategies, because as, as Paul says, or Mr. Doring says, this is, this is going to keep going.
Ball.
Pardon? Okay, thank you. This is, this is going to keep going, because we keep inviting and want people to live here and raise their families here. We keep, the wine business keeps going, and wants to prosper. And so, if, if we're pushing against each other for space, let's try to organize a strategy so that it doesn't become a conflict, but it, it works in balance. So, that's sort of where I am. If we look at criteria for something like this, I would also like to look at strategies for how we come up with smaller trucks, or staging areas that, that keep our livability as high as we possibly can.
What, Mr. Presswitz, what would you suggest is the way to proceed here? Should we form another council subcommittee to take a look at this?
I think there's a possibility of contracting with the City of Hercules, first of all.
[laughing]
But as an alternative to that, I think what we can do is just put our thinking caps on and bring you back some additional data and options to consider. And I, I recognize it's a, it's a challenging issue, and it's a, it's a difficult one. But I think we've received some good feedback tonight, and we can bring you back something down the road.
All right, good. Well, let's leave, is everybody comfortable with leaving it at that for the moment?
[inaudible]
Okay, good.
[inaudible]
Let's see, where, where are we here? This relates to Calistoga Affordable Housing, and I'm too slow with this, for sure. Is that you, Ms. Mitz?
No, it's no.
Oh, Mr. House. Next time, I'm going to write down who it is on the, on the paper, so I don't have to rely on the computer.
No problem, sir. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is consideration of a recommendation from staff to fund an additional contingency budget of $30,000 with a loan from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the, to Calistoga Affordable Housing for the Turley Flats Affordable Housing Project. There's a significant amount of, of background in the staff report regarding kind of where we are and how we got here. Summarizing that, public funding to date from the city is $835,000. The city has committed to the project in the form of loans from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and most recently, on April of 18 this year, to address a budget overrun, the council approved an additional $135,000 to this project. On August 2nd, staff was notified, and additional change orders had resulted in, in increases, and again pushed the project beyond the current budget by $148,000, and, and bank funding for the project had been frozen. On August 14th of this year, the Napa County Board of Supervisors approved a request from Calistoga Affordable Housing to provide the project with an additional $148,000 in funding to cover the budget shortfall. However, they put several caveats on this funding, and that's the, the crux of what's before the council tonight. And just to, to note, the county to date has put in $798,000 into the project. You'll recall that you previously approved a loan agreement, promissory notes, and additional regulatory agreements regarding the loans of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to the project, as I mentioned, totaling $835,000. The county's funded an additional 148 on August 14th. However, they requested two primary caveats. One is that the city agreed to allow a third RENA housing needs assessment, or regional housing needs assessment, RENA credit, to be transferred from the city to the county in the next cycle, so that's 2022 till 2030. You will recall, we previously committed two credits to the county as a part of their previous funding of the project. And the second caveat is that the city approved an additional contingency budget, and I'm going to quote from their resolution, "to cover any cost overruns that may occur after the county contributes their $148,000." It's worth noting, these requests from the applicant came in kind of last minute, and the county essentially took it and ran with it. Staff did not have time to negotiate or work with them on any of this language that they put in their resolution. It was incorporated in the resolution, and, and a copy is attached for the council review. The county also provided a summary of their contributions to other communities, including St. Helena, with regards to the cost essentially of their funding of those projects, and the RENA credits they get associated with that as a means of providing some context. And our project was, I think, the second most expensive RENA credit for the county to date, from the information they provided. Well, staff, as I mentioned, wasn't involved in drafting the specific conditions. There is a demonstrated need for, to ensure project completion and occupancy in 2018, and based on this, staff is recommending that the city set aside, the council set aside an additional $30,000 from the trust fund as a contingency loan for the Turley Flats project to cover any future unanticipated construction costs. Previous reviews of funding requests from the council, or from Calistoga Affordable Housing by the council, resulted in some questions regarding their other applications for grants, et cetera. Mr. Corman has attached a response to those questions as a part of the staff report, and it is anticipated, it is, and worth noting that the city's anticipating occupancy of these units as a method to comply with the Calderon settlement for this year. Unfortunately, representatives from Calistoga Affordable Housing were not able to be here. Mr. Corman's under the weather, so he's not able to be here. I'll do my best to answer any questions you have, and we can maybe discuss options if the council needs some additional time. There's a summary of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund financial impacts associated with this and, and other commitments. If this is supported, the balance of the trust fund will be $106,000, and then going back to $186,000 after repayment of a bridge loan that was provided to another affordable housing developer. And then, obviously, if the money is not utilized, because this is just a contingency for unforeseen construction costs, the balance would be $216,000 approximately. With that, staff is available to, or I'm sorry, it's recommended by staff that the council modify the Turley Flats RENA transfer agreement to grant them a third credit, and create an additional contingency fund of $30,000 to cover the, any potential unforeseen costs associated with the project, and then authorize the city managers to draft, finalize, and approve the required documents for the loan. Available for any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
I have one. Were you able to look into that issue on the waiver of the civic impact fee that had been reported, but apparently?
So, yes, thank you.
Maybe you could explain it.
Yeah, so, the 2012 staff report that approved the project, and it was again referenced in 2014, identified that a number of impact fees had been waived, or essentially found to not apply to the project, one of which included civic. The resolution that actually adopted made the findings that the project was not subject to those, did not include civic, the civic impact fees, and that resulted in about a $16,000 delta from what the project was required to pay, and what it potentially should have been required to pay, based on the council's intent. I have discussed it with the city attorney. The resolution is the controlling document, that's the legal document. However, there may be options in order for the council to essentially reconsider that, but we need to go back and review the tapes, the minutes, and all the things to determine what the intent of the council was in making that determination, and staff has not done that.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we did was, somebody maybe waived a fee of $16,000. Because it was never in the resolution, that $16,000 was included in the loan that we made to California, or Calistoga Affordable Housing, which in turn, $16,000 was deposited in our general fund to pay a civic impact fee that previous council had determined there was no nexus. So, my question would be, isn't there a way we can fix this? And, you know, adopt a resolution now, and save $16,000 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? In which case, we only have to take out 14 to come up with a $30,000. I mean, that would be my suggestion.
And there very much is a process by which to do that. It is a resolution. Staff had the concern in speaking with the city attorney, if this, because the report identifies what the staff recommendation was, and without reviewing the minutes, we can't determine that the council agreed with all the staff's recommendations, and we just haven't had time to do that research. However, we absolutely can commit to doing it and bringing back that resolution to fix that, what appears to be a, an error.
Let me, yeah, it sounds like it. So, let me ask this question. If we approve this resolution tonight, which it sounds to me like we need to do to keep that project moving forward and not risking its position with the bank, can you come back in a couple of weeks with hopefully something on the consent item that makes this administrative change?
Yes, absolutely, except for the timeline. Staff, not comfortable committing to a couple of weeks at this point.
All right, well, at some point, yeah.
But absolutely, we can bring that back, yes.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Is there any further questions from council? Is there any?
So, that, that keeps the project moving forward, but still can address what, what Mary brought up?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Is there any public comment? I think we've exhausted the public here. All right, is there any further council discussion?
Just, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm curious whether there was a conversation with Napa County staff with respect to this pledge that we would cover all cost overruns, and then have that in their resolution, which their board supervisors probably relied on. That's a little troubling for me.
Yeah, so, the county staff unfortunately did not engage city staff at all in drafting that resolution, and so, we weren't made aware of it until after it was adopted by the county.
Wow, yeah, I don't like it either, but the good news here is that the project is very far along, so the risk, I think, is not great, although.
I'm looking for, I'm looking at other future endeavors with the county. I think that's kind of strange and dangerous, frankly. I see your point, Mayor.
To the county's credit, it was likely a, a reaction to some very concerning emails that were flying around at the time regarding the project's completion, the bank's funding. There's a little bit of, I should say, a lot of concern over, over how the project would be able to move forward and, and not get into another stop in the construction, given the pending winter and, and all these things. So, I think the county had the best interest of the project in mind, it was just unfortunate timing. They did rush it to a faster agenda than they were originally intending to, to try to keep the project moving.
Right, the, you know, the project was actually shut down for a week or so, because the bank was too worried that it wasn't going to be repaid on its loan.
And I will- And I will, I've been meaning to take the time, Helmer Construction has absolutely kept this project going. They've, they've worked extensively without payments. They've done a lot of really good things that have helped the city, and I tell Doug that every time I see him and how appreciative I am, but just to say that publicly, I think is worth it, because they, they've done the city a big favor and have asked for nothing.
On this project, maybe this question is not really part of this discussion, but have you heard whether there's going to be a PG&E issue with respect to getting electricity to these buildings? Because I know that PG&E is woefully behind in everywhere in the Napa, well, many counties.
Everywhere.
I've heard that that is a lingering issue that we need to be concerned about in terms of the delay in this project.
So the developer, the Calistoga Affordable Housing, has expressed that concern to me. I asked him to share any email correspondence he had between himself and PG&E and offer to use our channels that we have with PG&E to try to include, or ensure that it doesn't get held up. I have not seen evidence of that occurring yet, but that is definitely a concern on both the applicant side and city side, and we are trying to get in front of it as much as possible.
Can I just say one thing? Would it be possible to get an update on the, where we're at with the Calderon settlement and see where we're heading and that we're meeting all the milestones and everything? It'd be nice.
Absolutely. The next milestone is December 31st of this year, so it seems like good timing, maybe early November, something like that, to work with the city attorney on providing an update on where we are with that and compliance. I will say, if this project gets occupied, we will be absolutely in compliance until the next milestone.
Great.
Okay, very good. And would you express, on behalf of all of us, our appreciation to Helmer Construction for its dedication to the project?
Yeah.
It has not been easy for that construction company, for sure. All right, with that, is there a motion to accept the staff recommendation?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Cobberstein?
Yes.
Ellsworth?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Final item tonight is an update on our, oh, not the final item, next to final item is 10.7 is being continued.
That's correct.
All right, so the next item is the bimonthly update on our goals and strategic objectives.
Right, so we have our bimonthly update on city council goals and strategic objectives. Just a couple of things to point out and note. When we have an added item to the work plan, work that we've done, I've added, in some cases, now I think it's closing in on 10 different items, so that we acknowledge that that work has been completed. In most cases, I think that the additional items have been completed, and in many cases, these items fall very nicely into the various goals and buckets, if you will, for those. So I want to make sure that the council is acknowledged for the additional work that's getting done and completed. On item four, under the first goal, improve and maintain safe and reliable city infrastructure. Item four really was the item preceding this one on the agenda tonight. We anticipated having that conversation, but there's additional work to do, and we will need to continue that item, but I anticipate it will come back relatively quickly. And so while it's shown as done, it was anticipated to be done tonight, so. Number 10, under the same goal, just again to highlight the comments that Erica mentioned this earlier this evening, some of these items on the list are, you know, relatively straightforward work, but this is a $400,000-plus paving job that took a lot of work to get organized in the first place, and we kicked it off this week, and will be finished hopefully by the end of the month, so a lot of work went into that. The Shape Committee, for example, is one item on this entire list, and we know how engaged that particular item was. Let me pause there, because you may have questions. You're getting familiar with this process. You may have questions about the status of various items or clarification on items.
Any council member have? I think a question was raised, well, I'm not sure, I may be out of order here, but a question was raised earlier with respect to the not-for-profit review of our ordinance.
So the staff has done a good job of staying current on that, and I will admit, I think it's been on my to-do list for several weeks, and probably over a month, probably. And what I, the version that I worked on and provided feedback on round one had a few edits, but I'm told this next version is, has been polished pretty nicely. So I anticipate once, maybe on September 18th, after a couple of milestones are finished here, I will be able to get some comments back to the staff. We'll get this finished well before the end of the year, because that is sort of the deadline on making sure this gets done, so that when we advertise this in January, we have a new set of guidelines for the grant recipients and applicants.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then we can move on to 10.9, and I'm going to report out on that one. This relates to two resolutions that are coming up in the California League of Cities meetings. The first one relates to a resolution that seeks to put the legislature into a better position of acknowledging local control, and I think it's well-supported, and we should support it. And then Resolution Two is really dear to my heart. It seeks to give cities the opportunity to address locally regulations regulating pesticides, which is now completely controlled by state law, particularly secondary effect of poisoning, for example, rodents on other, on other wildlife, foxes, birds, and so on. And I did say, deep to my heart, because a long time ago, back in 1971, I represented the defenders of wildlife in a lawsuit against the Department of the Interior dealing with a black-footed ferret relating to a poisoning program, and brought it to an end. The Humane Society joined that, and it had the effect of restoring the black-footed ferret population, at least in some prairie dog towns in the West. Thank you, Mr. Doring. He knew it was coming. And he, so what I would invite is council support for these two resolutions. Is there any public comment? No public comment?
I'll just make a comment on the second resolution. I think that that's, that, this is, this is very timely, and that we need to be able to have some local control on these issues. They affect us and the people who live here, so I'm glad to see this. I'm glad to see the League of Cities being involved here.
So at this point?
I'd like to also add a little comment to the second resolution, and that is that the Public Works Director and I have had conversations about evaluating the city's pesticide use, and it's my interest that we transition away from the use of certain types of products that we know are causing issues. And so you can anticipate some research on our part, and really some planning on our part. What other cities are experiencing is that it, you may experience a few more weeds in the built environment. We may experience a few more people hours in addressing those weeds and dealing with them, but the consequence for the environment is it's a healthier environment. And so we're committed to working on an implementation plan as part of our Public Works Department evaluation to make sure that we have the staffing necessary to take care of some of these areas that we know need attention on a regular basis, particularly in the spring, but also transition us away from the use of pesticides.
Excellent.
Would that be something that would come forward for a resolution? Is it?
It's probably informational more than anything. If there, if the, I think in the context of this, the reorg, if we, I'm anticipating we will bring you a recommendation for modifying the structure of the Public Works Department to ensure that certain characteristics, responsibilities of the department are adequately staffed and have the attention they need. And so in the context of that, it may be something that we need some council direction or approval on in terms of staffing, but I think we'll be able to build you a strategy and a plan that will work with our staff and be better for the environment.
Thank you, that's great.
All right, so at this point, the chair would entertain a motion to, for the City of St. Helena, to support both resolutions, joining any number of other cities of excellent standing.
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellsworth?
Yes.
Cobberstein?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.